Good evening. I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have three items on the agenda. The first item is minutes from our meeting on February 1st.
Motion approved.
Second. Any questions or any discussion, any changes? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, resolution authorizing representative to file applications for financial assistance from the State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund. Travis, good evening.
Good evening. I'll start by a little bit of background of this improvement fund. The Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund is a state revolving loan fund that combines federal capitalization grants from the EPA and the Clean Water and Drinking Water State revolving funds with state funding to provide financial assistance to municipalities for public-owned drinking water infrastructure projects that are needed to achieve or maintain compliance. That's the key word, compliance, with federal and state regulations relating to water supply. In our case, it could potentially be the lead service laterals replacements. This resolution is one of many parts needed to be established for the improvement fund application process. The resolution will allow the water utility to apply for current and future programs associated with the Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund. I am asking and recommending the council to approve this resolution and allow the water utility manager to be the authorized representative to file applications with the Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Funds. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any questions for Travis?
I just have one question. Does this require an upfront cost? This grant?
No.
No, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. If all those are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Item number three, approved contract 2021-22 AECOM Schuster Drive Landfill Monitoring. Good evening, Doug.
Good evening. Tonight's agenda item is the landfill gas extraction and groundwater monitoring contract. But prior to asking for approval and discussion on that item, we've asked AECOM representatives Tori Schultz and Leo Lindemanston to do a little brief update on landfill monitoring and the vapor intrusion investigation currently underway. I'll get them started here. Tori and Leo, could you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Tori. I'll turn it over to you then.
All right. Thank you. Leo Lindemanston, colleague of mine, is also on the phone calling in to give a brief update on the former Schuster Drive landfill vapor intrusion investigation and landfill monitoring services. We can go on to slide number two. As you know, we gave a brief update back in June. This is a similar figure that we've shown here on the right-hand side. The beginning of this investigation, the samples that were collected for the vapor intrusion began in August of 2019, and we are continuing. We have collected samples from approximately 190 homes in the neighborhood, and this is in general accordance with the Wisconsin DNR R&amp;R 800, which is their publication for vapor intrusion investigations. So as we started this investigation, the city did a wonderful job to gather demographic information and provided us with phone numbers to contact these residents. In doing so, we quickly realized that there was already an existing number of radon mitigation systems in the neighborhood, and that's 24. That's kind of important to know because the systems that were installed to deal with the vapor intrusion pathway were very similar to a radon mitigation system. Those existing systems in the neighborhood are shown in the dark or the black hatch that angles off to the right-hand side in the figure, but then also the homes that we've sampled are shown in green. And then a few homes are shown on this figure, which we were not allowed to sample because access was not granted. In doing this investigation, we also collected 11 outdoor ambient air samples, and those provided a constant to evaluate the other forces acting in the neighborhood. And we collected those samples, they were spread out while we were collecting samples from other homes in the neighborhood. And then we also, in cooperation with the Department of Health, shown on this figure here, two properties in light blue were sampled by the Department of Health. And there was one actually additional property that was sampled due to some variabilities that took place in the sampling, but also with a resident that was adamant about having the Department of Health that also would do some sampling at their home. But the results of those sampling has shown at those properties that no action was required. In the sampling that we conducted, in accordance with the DNR guidance document, we were to collect two samples during two different seasons, one in the heating season, which is what we're in now, where we're heating our home, and then one also in the cooling season, the summer months. And the reason we do that is because of the different factors that draw air into the home. Forced air system generally pulls air into the system during the heating season, and in the cooling season, you have different factors. So the DNR asks that we collect samples during different seasons. On the next bullet here, we have the sampling is scheduled through May of 2021, which is kind of a bit of an uncertainty. And the reason we say that is because when we install a subslab depressurization system or our system is installed, the DNR guidance asks that we collect three performance verification system sampling events that occur in no less than three months. I'm sorry, no less than six months. The last system that was installed, Doug, you can move on to the next slide. The last system was the 23rd system that was installed, was installed in November of 2019. So we need to wait another few months before we can get back out and collect our third performance verification event. So as I just touched on, we've, there's been 23 systems that have been commissioned, subslab depressurization systems. We refer to them as SSDS for short. On the figure, it's lower right-hand corner of the screen here, you can see southeast portion of the neighborhood. We refer to it as the southeast focus area. In that portion of the neighborhood, that is the only portion that subslab depressurization systems have been installed. And we have completed evaluation of 22 of the systems. And as I mentioned just a moment ago, one of the systems that was just installed in November, we've done two of the performance verification sampling events, and that's during the heating season. So we now, we need to wait until the cooling season, April, May, as it shows here on the screen. Just recently, we removed the last air purifier from a property. Those air purifiers are deployed intentionally when we see vapor action levels exceeded on a property, and those air purifiers are deployed temporarily until mitigation system is installed. So just recently, we removed an air purifier from a property, and I use this one particular property as the example on the lower left-hand of the screen here, in which we had to do additional investigation. You can see the initial sampling event, April of 2020. Indoor air results show TCE was 6.0. The first and second sampling events, those performance events, one in June and one in September of 2020, were both above the vapor action level for TCE. Whenever we see concentrations that are not below the vapor action level, we need to do a little bit more investigation. And this particular property was a little bit more challenging. It was actually the most challenging property that we had in terms of coordinating with the residents. Even though they allowed a system to be installed in their home and allowed us into their home a few times there during the first and second performance events, they were very, very much a challenge to get in contact with, to continue the investigation, as well as the Department of Health was unable to connect with them as well and educate them on the potential other sources that may be in their home that were introduced by the residents. So in short, we get to January of 2021. We were able to connect with the residents through an actual visit to their home when we were out in the neighborhood, and they allowed us in. And it was a very good meeting in which they were educated quite a bit, and they really understood that they needed to cooperate so that we could continue this investigation and collect that third performance event. So we collected the sample in January. Results came back as non-detect for TCE. So the indoor air purifier was removed, and you can see the results shown on this table here on the lower left-hand corner. The data that we have collected on the systems that have installed continue to show that the air concentrations have been reduced to below the vapor action levels. So the systems that are in are functioning as designed. You can continue on to the next slide. Along with these subslab depressurization systems that are installed are continuing obligations. During the third performance event, we present the residents with an operation, maintenance and monitoring plan, and that plan explains to those residents the main components of the system and what is required that an annual inspection of that system is required by the DNR. But during that third performance event, we introduced those residents and actually conducted an inspection and showed them how quickly and easily it was to do the inspection and then document the inspection. Eight of the property owners have agreed to do their own inspection. With the remainder of the systems installed, will be the responsibility of the city to do those annual inspections going forward. And those annual inspections in the systems that are installed are permanent until data demonstrates that there is no longer a vapor intrusion potential. So we would have to collect data that demonstrates that there's no reason for a subslab depressurization to exist any longer. So that's in the uncertainty of where we're at. But continuing obligation, we would expect at this point to be an annual inspection. We've communicated to the residents that we desire that they do their annual inspection in around the spring of the year, and then we've given them a tentative deadline in around June so that we can follow up with them if they are not doing an inspection. Next slide, please. At this point, I'm going to hand it over to Leo Lindemanston, who's now going to describe the landfill monitoring services that we do.
Thank you, Tori. Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to describe to you the proposed landfill monitoring services we have for the next two years, for 2021 through 2022. They're very similar to the ongoing landfill monitoring services that we've done the past two years. And actually, it's been going on, the landfill monitoring, for pushing 20, 25 years, the continuous monitoring of the groundwater and gas systems out at the landfill. The services here are kind of summarized in that it involves some remote monitoring of the operational systems out there. There's an operating landfill gas blower and groundwater extraction system that the combination systems are monitored daily just to make sure that they're up and running. If there's any problems, that action can be taken to correct. Services then include monthly water level monitoring. This is to check on the performance of the extraction system, make sure it's achieving its operational goal, which is gradient control, gradient, trying to prevent the plume from further leaving the landfill area. Quarterly landfill gas monitoring, where we go around and check the probes around the perimeter of the landfill to make sure that there is no landfill gas migraine away from the property. And then also during that same visit, we monitor the gas extraction wells over the top of the hill, the cap itself, make sure that the system is performing properly, that we're drawing the gas out. And if need be, we can focus the vacuum that's applied by the blower where it'll do the most benefit. Other parts of the monitoring include then quarterly, semi-annual, and annual, the kind of tiered monitoring visits, where we come out and sample the monitoring network out around the landfill. The quarterly visits are abbreviated visits, where we come out and sample a short list of wells. Again, it's to determine the proper performance of the extraction system. In addition to the water levels that show us that the extraction wells are providing that gradient control, the water sampling helps us confirm that by providing us some chemical data that we can see the constituents in the plume are being held in check. Semi-annually, then, we also sample some private wells at distance around the landfill, confirming that water is safe to drink. And then annually, we get our snapshot of the entire network of monitoring wells. All the wells are sampled, approximately about 45, I think, in total. And we get our snapshot then of the entire site on the property, and then extending off-site to the northeast and south. As part of the program, then, each year, we generate a landfill gas report, submit to the DNR, showing the compliance with the plan modifications. And then also, at two-year intervals, we submit a groundwater report that again summarizes all the data that's been collected and provides a demonstration that the systems are operating as intended. Next slide. So what we wanted to highlight is that during the past period, it saw the culmination of a plan modification that was initially started around 2014, 2015, where we saw it from the DNR, a reduction in the landfill gas system operations. At that time, we had seen and felt that we had the data to start reducing some of the monitoring and operations of the system. The changes that were enacted, where we were able to discontinue the burning of the landfill gas flare, that was almost immediately. The landfill itself is very, it's in its tail end of its life as far as a methane producer. And so it was no longer producing sufficient gas to support combustion of the flare, so that was petitioned for and discontinued. Likewise, we were then further able to, over the next couple of years, demonstrate that the control of landfill gas could be done with reduced operation of the blower, further saving money, reduce the amount of electricity they used to run the blower system because we run on intermittent schedule. And then, as we continued to demonstrate with, through the data collection, we were able to reduce the monitoring at the perimeter wells. At the start of this, we were making weekly visits, and now we've reduced it all the way to where it's a quarterly monitoring event. So we're only out there every three months to collect the gas readings. Next slide, please. We're looking forward now in the groundwater portion of the monitoring, that as the vapor intrusion investigation has completed its vapor phase, the in-home sampling, subslab sampling, that there will be some additional groundwater investigation in the subdivision as part of that to nail down the monitoring, the long-term monitoring of the plume out beneath the subdivision. Once that's completed, those wells will like, will be incorporated into the landfill monitoring program and be part of the ongoing monitoring. What the figure here on the right-hand side of the slide shows is the water table contours showing the landfill in pink in the northwest corner there, and then groundwater flow away from it to the east and southeast from the landfill. Of note here is that you can clearly see the effect our groundwater extraction system has in attempting to control the plume by the closed depression just on the south end of the landfill. That little bullseye there is a result of our extraction of groundwater there, preventing or reducing the migration of the plume away from the landfill. We have a pair of wells there, and there's another pair of extraction wells that work up on the north end of the landfill. Together, in 2020, we pumped about 20 million gallons of water from the ground there in trying to, in complying with the gradient control requirement. Our monitoring services then include, again, the checking of that system daily, the reporting of all the monitoring data that's collected, demonstrating its performance. A couple of bullet points here, point out some of the historical highlights. The groundwater system was started in the late 90s. It's been in continuous operation since then with a few interruptions for modifications or service maintenance-type shutdowns. It will need to continue operating into the foreseeable future as we want to continue controlling the groundwater plume and prevents further migration beneath the subdivision. Most of the reductions that we saw in the VOCs from the operation occurred in the first five years, looking through the historical data. And then probably over the last five years, we still track it continuously, but the concentrations, the levels of contamination that we see have pretty much are steady state now. They're all lower level, but they're no longer declining. They're pretty much holding steady. Next slide, please. So what I just described to you was the landfill gas and groundwater monitoring services that we're looking for, continuing for the next two years. As Tori explained in the first part of this presentation, the ongoing vapor intrusion investigation is, the vapor phase is winding down, the in-home testing and installation of the SSDS systems. But we still need to complete the groundwater portion of that. And what we're looking forward to is that as that investigation unfolds, it will be incorporating that along with a plan modification for the landfill itself, similar in purpose as the landfill gas plan mod was several years ago. We'll be looking to modernize the monitoring network at the landfill. What that would entail is that, looking through the many, many years of data and the history, we will be proposing to eliminate, abandon somewhere in the neighborhood of about 30 monitoring wells, some of which are over 30 years old, that we've been on and off monitoring through the requirements of the DNR. But part of that will be, will also be incorporating, we're figuring somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 new wells that will become part of that network. Basically, we'll begin with then some of these older wells that are no longer needed and adding wells that are better positioned to help us understand and keep track of the plume beneath the subdivision and provide us data for the landfill, as I'm suggesting here in the next bullet there for the foreseeable future. And right now, I won't venture a guess of it being any less than 10 years, knowing the history of this landfill and the type of plume we're dealing with. It may be a longer period, but it's needed. The last bullet point here is that we do continue to seek out ways to try to be efficient out there and keep the costs manageable. I know that over the years, there's been occasionally some thoughts of opportunities to do some renewable energy-type project. It is a large space on a high point up on the hill. Some of these things may be viable, but any of these could be explored further, but they would have to keep in mind some of the basic premises of the landfill's systems up there, meaning protection of its cap and preservation of its remedial systems, landfill gas and groundwater systems. Next slide. And lastly, just kind of big picture, want to mention that in the past year, in 2020, that the DNR with the Department of Health looked to establish some changes to the statewide groundwater standards and also incorporate some new standards, specifically with interest to the landfill. We were looking that the Department of Natural Resources will be lowering the groundwater standard for trichloroethylene, which is one of the primary contaminants coming out of the landfill and its plume. It was also the driver for the vapor intrusion investigation. The TCE standard will be lowered from its current enforcement standard of five micrograms per liter by an entire order of magnitude by a power of 10. It'll be lowered down to 0.5. This will have an effect of, one, making it harder to achieve getting below that number. It will take a longer time. It also would expand potentially the area that would be in exceedance. So that's significant here, just not so much in that our investigations haven't been thorough. We've been very thorough and have definition of our extent, but it's more in speaking to the length of time that might be required to achieve the lower standard. The other thing that was proposed in the last year is that they're going to be promulgating numeric standards for PFOS compounds in the coming year or two, seeing how fast they get through the process. PFOS is a new class of contaminants. I guess it's not so new, but it's come to very much prominence in the past year. The DNR in December gave to the governor their plan forward on PFOS, and we're anticipating that it's possible sometime in the next year or two that we'll be asked to investigate for the presence of those compounds at the landfill, too. At this point, we don't know that, but we're anticipating that that's possibly in the So that's it for my presentation. I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Leo.
All right. Thank you, Leo. Tori, thank you very much. Any questions? Yes. Hallman Allen?
The ongoing inspections, will those be performed by, they're the city responsibility, will those be performed by city personnel, or is that part of what we're contracting out?
The ones that choose, the homeowners that choose not to do a self-inspection will be done by city staff.
Okay. And there was mention of removal of, I believe, 20 million gallons of water through pumping. Where does that get disposed of?
That goes into our sanitary sewer and gets treated at our treatment plant.
Okay. And then final question is, the homeowners that declined any inspection at all, there were a number of those, is there any city exposure in the future if those people choose to sue or claim harm?
I mean, there's active litigation, so we, I mean, can't really talk about it at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there anybody? Hallman.
Yeah, I just, Doug, are we going to plan to schedule like a Zoom meeting even or something to kind of update all these property owners in Villa Park? I know with COVID, some of our meetings got pushed, and we were trying to do it. I just, just to kind of give them the same presentation we just got or updates. I just, just to kind of give them the same presentation we just got, or updates kind of explaining where we're kind of at. You know, everybody should, everybody that needed to be contacted was contacted, you know. I guess I just want to make sure that everyone in Villa Park feels good understanding where the city's at.
I would say that would be appropriate when we get closer to the end of the investigation with the testing in the spring. So maybe after that point.
So like a spring kind of meeting, maybe?
Yeah, and that's something, you know, I'll discuss with Jay and we can.
Okay. Perfect.
To the timing of that, we, we did do a kickoff meeting in October of 19, and then had another Zoom June-ish, I want to say, of 2020 last year. So, so timing-wise, I don't know if spring is, if we'll be that much further by then versus June of 2021, but I guess I just, to manage expectations, would, we'll keep you posted as to when it occurs, but we'll do it when the, when it makes sense that we have the best information available. And Tori and Leo and city staff meet with the Wisconsin DNR on a regular basis to keep them apprised of the progress that we're making. So we, we also work with the DNR as to the, the best timing to share that information back out to the constituents. Appropriate recommendation to do it at the close of, I feel like we did, we'll have done it at the beginning, middle, and then hopefully a wrap-up of the.
Right. That's what I'm saying. Like, yeah, I'd like to have at least some sort of a wrap-up. And obviously, we know it's going to be an ongoing issue, like they said, for 10 years, but at least, you know, we can put to rest, hopefully, the majority of people, less the lawsuit, et cetera, but.
Anyone else? Okay. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Motion carried.
Thank you, Tori.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, a turn. Thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you.
And good evening. I will call to order the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for February 15th, 2021. Hopefully, everybody had a wonderful Valentine's Day yesterday. I'll note that all the aldermen are present and accounted for, so please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to apply. (Inaudible) America, this is a republic where we stand as one nation under God and visible, with the DNR justice for all.
Thank you. I'll note that we have nine items on our agenda, the first being presentations. Number one, Police Department Citizen Appreciation Awards, with a presentation by our police chief, Chief Moeller.
Good evening. Tonight, we're announcing award recipients, 30 citizens. As you know, in the past, we'd have them all here at the meeting and give presentations because of present restrictions. We are instead having officers deliver these awards to the citizens in the community or having them come to the police department to receive. We will be posting the names and summaries tomorrow morning, along with some of the pictures that we have already served the, or awarded the recipients. I'll just tell you briefly, recipients, four of them, Robert Koklinski, Jeffrey Latrell, Tanner Welch, and Rob Steiner, receiving awards for their information that they gave last August in apprehending a bank robbery suspect shortly after photos were posted of that individual. Robert Koklinski called that he identified the suspect, and shortly thereafter, working with individuals in the community, we were able to track him down. And the last person that's mentioned here, Rob Steiner, actually followed the suspect from a gas station, alerted police to his whereabouts, and he was safely apprehended later that same day. So thank all of those individuals. Two individuals, Karen Elliott and Harry Shahorn, are being given awards last August 28th. They observed a fire at a neighbor's residence. The resident's mother and three children were safely evacuated due to their quick action. Firefighters were able to put out the fire safely. Eric Kelly, October, observed an individual stealing a large amount of merchandise from the Walmart, followed the individual out, gave descriptions, called police. Due to his actions, we were able to make a quick arrest and return several thousand dollars in merchandise to the store. Michael Janti on December 23rd was shopping at the Home Depot when he observed a off-duty police officer struggling with an individual. Mr. Janti came to the officer's assistance, assisted the officer taking the man into custody and waiting for police to arrive. Due to his actions, saved possible injury to the officer and safely brought the man into custody for a felony retail theft. Julie Trunley is being awarded just this last, earlier this month, she observed a police foot chase, saw an individual hide objects in a snowbank, which was some illegal drugs. She gave information not only to where the suspect was, but identified this property. We had another incident earlier this month where a citizen, an officer was taking a woman into custody. She began fighting with the officer. A citizen came out, John P. Daly, I'm sorry, I forgot to give his name, assisted in getting extra officers into the building to aid the officer that was struggling, and fortunately, neither the officer nor the suspect were injured. And then, this last Friday night, or Friday, Thursday night, Friday morning at 4:00 in the morning, in fact, this worker, I just talked to his boss, didn't even know that he had done this. David Gurkey, who works for the City of West Bend, is a snow driver, snowplow driver. 4:00 in the morning, saw a five-year-old child out in nothing but his pajamas on. It was minus 5 degrees at the time. No question that if Mr. Gurkey didn't take the actions he took, that that little boy tragically probably would not have made it. Mr. Gurkey got the boy into his truck, notified police, and police found that the boy had woken up during the night and left the residence without care. People that were responsible for him realizing he had left. And as I mentioned, I talked to his boss earlier tonight, and he wasn't even aware of it. So Doug, thank you for make sure, and we'll be coming out to give David his award. And then, 19 people will be getting awards for calling police throughout the year that led to arrests of a number of impaired drivers throughout the city. And each one of those times, people either called us as they were following people, gave descriptions, some people took videos of the drivers, all led to the arrest of 19 individuals for operating while impaired and taking dangerous people off the road. So, thank you to those 30 citizens, and we look forward to next year having a live event again. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thanks for sharing the stories. We'll move on to item number two, approval of the Common Council Regular Minutes for February 1st.
Motion to approve.
Check it.
Thank you. Allen and Mottel, any questions or corrections? Seeing none, all is in favor, said by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Move on to consent agenda, consisting items three and four.
Second.
Thank you. Kayla and Allen, any questions on those?
I just have one question. I just want to make sure with Doug that he feels good, like satisfied with AECom, feeling good about the response time, follow-ups with your staff and everything if we go with them.
I absolutely do have the utmost confidence in their professionalism and how they handled this delicate investigation. We have, the question came up from the mayor earlier today. We have gone out to RFP in the past, as recent as the last contract, and every time, history has shown that AECom comes in at the lowest price and has a long history with the city, which is very beneficial as well.
Great. Thank, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you guys felt good and everything is good.
Absolutely.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all is in favor of consenting the agenda, said by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have one agenda item for consideration, that's number five, mayoral appointment of David Etmer to the Police and Fire Commission. We did have a resignation on that commission. I got to talk to Dave a little while. He's a good guy, worked with, works with Family Promise. He has worked with Family Promise for quite a while, past president of our chamber, VP, director of West Bend Mutual. He just really likes getting involved, so thank you for stepping up once again.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Burquist and Allen, any questions? Seeing none, all is in favor, said by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you, sir, for stepping up. And then we'll move on to reports, and we'll take items six, seven, and eight all together. They're all reports by Alderman Mottel. They are regarding the downtown bid board meeting, the community TV committee meeting, and the Historic Barton Business Association. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Jenkins. First of all, let's start with the bid board. We had a meeting on February 2nd, 8:15 a.m., right here in the City Hall Council Chambers. Very brief financial report. We're only a couple of months in, so we didn't have much to talk about there. We did discuss, you probably have noticed, walking or driving through downtown, that some of the roofline lights are out. We've discussed having those looked at and possibly a quote to having that fixed. So, Rob Steiner will be attending the March, or are we doing April, right?
We'll do an update in the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, update in the next meeting. Very good. We revisited the bid board committees, discussed the Transportation Committee and Marketing Committee. The Transportation Committee will continue in 2021 with the existing members. The Marketing Committee will start anew, beginning with a small group from the bid board, including Kathleen Murphy, Peg Fisher, myself, and Ken Collins. All right. Moving on to the community TV report. Jess Wiles reported on the Communications Department projects, programs, and social media growth and implementation of the new video on demand. Nicole Bell offered the last quarter numbers. We saw 17,018 on the CTV Facebook page, Instagram, 7% increase, Twitter, I'm sorry. Yes, Twitter, 1% increase, and LinkedIn, 4.3% increase. John Alke, our production manager, continues to be up to the challenge of keeping our virtual options open and live streaming West Bend High School sporting events, holiday events, such as the Christmas parade and tree lighting ceremony. On YouTube, we continue to enjoy an international audience as well as local, of course. And finally, Jess gave us another brief financial report. Finally, the HBVA report. First, let's talk about what happened over the past year, some of the good stuff anyways. Due to the pandemic, we did not get to do much for events, but we did continue to meet at Sandy's and discuss the building of the garden and continue to purchase Christmas stuff and make plans as we could. We did get the cornerstone for the garden designed, purchased, and placed in Barton Garden, and planning to purchase a memorial bench in the name of Mason Holbrook. Our thoughts and prayers to the Holbrook family and all affected by his passing. He is truly one of Barton's little angels. Speaking of angels, we also held a birthday party for Clara Malls, who turned 110 years old this past December 19th. An enthusiastic thank you to the Malls family for their donation in the amount of $1,500. Wow. Next, we got involved with what is now called the Historic Barton Fishery at Eddie's Lake House on Wallace Lake. A huge thank you to Sandy and Eddie and Kim and the crew for all their hard work in making that event such a great success. I believe we will doing, we will be doing that winter event going forward. So looking to the future, the voting members have decided to hire an accountant to keep our finances straight and do our taxes. We had been handling it in-house and volunteers, but it is too much, thank you for Tammy's blah 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 that you don't have to speak of. We got a quote for the lighting of the dam and getting pretty darn close to our goal for that, hoping this summer, like I said earlier, memorial bench for Mason for the garden, but also a group talking about purchasing an additional bench to complete the seating plans for that garden. Also have a couple of really nice outdoor sculpture that should complete the basic structure of the garden. Speaking of sculpture, we owe a debt of gratitude to the Friends of Sculpture Group, who are planning to move the tilted donut sculpture to the Firefired Memorial Bluff in front of West Bend Company. It is not enjoying much of an audience where it is. It's a big, beautiful, abstract industrial metal sculpture that will be showcased at the bluff as you enter or exit Barton. And I think that's about it. Yeah, there's a bunch of other stuff going on, but as it, as it comes up, we'll, we'll talk more about that. That's it.
Sounds good. Lots of good stuff going on. Any questions for Alderman Mottel? Seeing none, we'll go to number nine, a report by Alderman Butchlick or Dolnick regarding the Plan Commission meeting.
Plan Commission had a short agenda, most of it having to do with the development of a cold storage facility on University Drive north of Decor Road. But we did set the public hearing for TIF number 15, which is the brewery project, and that, so that will be next month, and I believe we might also have the site plan as well for it. Other things on the horizon are coming up. It sounds like March and April will, and that's usually the way it is with Plan Commission, because as we get into spring, things start happening. So March and April look like it'll be exciting times for the Plan Commission, just in time for Alderman Butchlick to get his feet wet.
Sounds good. Any questions for Alderman Dolnick? Seeing none, that does complete our agenda. I'll open up if there's any announcements, but I'll first just remind the public, we do have a primary election tomorrow for the state DPI and our own District 2. If you vote at the library, don't forget to vote tomorrow. Any other announcements for the good of the order? Yes, sir?
Happy Fat Tuesday, everybody. Tomorrow, it's garbage day.
There you go. Anything else? If not, having no further business for the Common Council, I will adjourn by the call of the chair. Have a great night.